Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June 11th. I'm the Chair Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioner Kristi Yokum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 4th, 2024.
I move approval of the minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. This brings us to item two, approval of the claims process through June 11th, 2024. And I'll note for commissioners that we do have an amendment for an additional claim for claim number 105994.
I would move approval of the claims, including the claim described by the clerk.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item three, our special presentation, the Commissioners Award of Excellence in for April 2024 to Nick Bowler, County Engineer, in the category of productivity. And I have Nick's nomination letter that I'll read into the record.
Please do. Oh, is Nick here?
Bring Nick up.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, please, please continue. Please read the letter into the record.
Absolutely. Nick Bowler, Engineer Two with Lancaster County Engineers Office, has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for April 2024. Bowler has worked for the Engineers Office for two years. He was nominated by John Linbo in the category of productivity. In his nomination, Linbo states Nick took over the design of 98th Street Old Chaney to A project when the previous designer left Lancaster County. He quickly accessed the project status, collaborated with his supervisor and NDOT to finalize the design, complete the project, and deliver final plans for letting NDOT and address all comments from the review process. Without Nick's diligence and willingness to adapt and learn the federal aid process, the project would not have been ready for letting in October of 2023. The timely delivery of the project in October allowed for a favorable bidding environment, resulting in the project being awarded at 3.845 million, approximately 1.1 million less than the letting estimate. Much of the savings is due to the product timing of the project letting. Although designing projects is a part of Nick's job description, his effort and willingness to learn the federal aid process, combined with his attention to detail, were exceptional. Taking over a partially designed project of this scale and bringing it to completion within the given timeframe is a testament to Nick's work ethic and drive. Thanks to his efforts, Lancaster County was able to realize significant savings on these projects. For those reasons, we are pleased to award Nick Bowler with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of April 2024.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I just want to thank John Linbo for the nomination and then the Commissioners for recognizing me. Really appreciate that. And then thank you to Pam and Larry for being so supportive and helpful all the time. And then the rest of my coworkers for making such an enjoyable work environment. Really appreciate it.
The gentleman, are you the supervisor?
I will step to the microphone and state your name.
You thought you were getting out of this, didn't you?
I did. I'm John Linbo. I'm the Road Design Manager. I nominated Nick. As the nomination letter pretty well covered, I know from experience how hard it is to take over a project and sort through someone else's documents, their style of work, and try to reconcile everything together, especially when, as the letter noted, there were elements to this project that aren't really common to the county products we do, like work with concrete in general, roundabouts, street lighting, storm sewer drainage. So it took a lot of resourcefulness for him to figure things out and figure out who in the city could help us with those aspects. And, you know, towards the end with NDOT's PSNE process, there was nearly daily communication because that's something we didn't have a lot of experience with either. And it was just a great demonstration of Nick's worth ethic and why I nominated him for this award.
That's great.
Here is your award. Congratulations. This is our pleasure to recognize you today.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. You might think what you did was just part of your job, but it sounds like it was extremely exceptional to make the project go well. And thank you, John, for nominating him. That's the sort of thing that creates the kind of culture that we want here in Lancaster County is recognizing and valuing your coworkers. So congratulations and thank you.
And I would just like to add for both of these gentlemen, Nick and John are great members of the team. And, you know, there's people in the world that like to talk about our young employees and how they this or they that. But I think what we don't talk about enough is how our younger employees are dedicated to the success of the organization that they're in and how extremely loyal they are. And so I appreciate the extra effort that they put in. It was extraordinary to get this project across the finish line. And as stated, it was a considerable savings to the taxpayers to get, to get Commissioner Ametson, that 98th Street done.
Yes, that's right. I just am very excited about that. I, ever since, that's, as long as I've been on the board, that has always been. When are we going to do something about that road?
Right about now.
Yeah, right about now. Thank you.
Yeah, but let's not minimize the duration of this project and how important it is that it moves forward. So stepping in halfway through and picking up all the pieces and putting them together is a great achievement. We, this is more than a word. This is our deepest appreciation to you, Nick, and the team that put this together, kept this important project moving forward. Thank you very much.
Genuinely, this, this project is foundational to this community. It is a critical project. You picked it up halfway through and you've done yeoman's work with it. So thank you, really.
And so when I talk about the length of time, I've been on the board for just about 12 years. It's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to item four, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items would be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. They are the approval items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. One, C-23-0295 with Aramark Correctional Services, LLC, provide food service for corrections facilities. C-18-0424 with Fastenal Company for facilities, industrial supplies, maintenance, repair, and operations. C-23-0505 with Summit Fire Protection Company for the annual service of fire extinguisher inspection, testing, and maintenance. C-19-0579 with RSM US LLP for auditing services for Lancaster County. B, right-of-way contracts with the following. Jack W. Nagel, North 27th Street and Mill Road in the amount of $280. Patricia E. Richmond, Life Estate, Davy Road and North 141st Street in the total amount of $1,562. Martha and Gary Williams, West Bennett and Southwest 72nd Street, the total amount of $1,848. Richard and Dorothy Williams, Life Estate, West Bennett Road and Southwest 72nd Street in the amount of $550. C, a subaward contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Lancaster County ICJR project in the amount of $11,005. D, change order two to county contract C-23-0764 with Hampton Commercial Construction Incorporated for construction of a civil protective custody center. And E, receive and place on file the following reports from May 2024, the Clerk of the District Court, the Assessor Register of Deeds, Records and Information Management, and the County Clerk.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, new business. Five A is the declaration in the matter terminating the declaration D 24-0001.
Good morning. Jim David, Zaver, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. We issued the disaster declaration as the events unfolded that Friday afternoon as the tornado outbreak impacted northeast Lancaster County. The initial damage estimates that we received from public property and critical infrastructure, those are the only things that can be counted towards the county's $1.4 million threshold to be eligible for state and federal assistance. The initial damage estimates that we received from Lincoln Electric System, Norris Public Power, and Lincoln Transportation Utilities, excuse me, I knew I had the list there. The three of those totaled just over $1.4 million. L T U, Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, their pumping station at 98th and Alvo Road suffered $250,000 damage, but that was covered by insurance. So when the calculation and the figures were turned in, insured coverage is subtracted from your damage estimate. So removing that $250,000 took us below the $1.4 million threshold that we needed to be eligible for the federal and state assistance. So we're still working closely with the state and the federal government on this. It's just that we are not eligible for that. As I said, that the damage estimates only include or can include public property and critical infrastructure.
And that, all that information's gathered, so the work is done here. We know where we stand now.
Correct. Yep, yep. It's an ongoing process. It's just moving forward. We're not eligible to be included in that federal disaster declaration.
Fair enough.
I would move that we approve the declaration terminating our emergency declaration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five B, resolution in the matter of county special permit 141 COA to amend special permit 141 CO for a personal wireless facility by extending the allowed height of the tower from 199 feet to 210 feet on property located at 9201 West Agnew Road.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five C, resolution in the matter of the closure of Bridge D-203 located on Rock Creek Road approximately 500 feet east of N 90, excuse me, of N 79 and 120, excuse me, 1,200 feet west of Northwest 56th Street to alleviate a clear and present danger to the public.
Pam Damian, Lancaster County Engineer. Bridge 203, which is shown at the location on the exhibit on the overhead, was determined to be a clear and present danger. I did speak briefly under open meetings last week about it, just so that everyone was aware. The water has gone down. We have been able to get measurements. We're currently doing some engineering calculations to determine if the depth of the piling is substantial enough, the embedded depth, to support, to support the bridge. And so we're, we of course know that if it is, it's very close. And there's some other things that we need to do to ensure that this bridge is safe for the traveling public. I always get calls when I close bridges, bridges like this, we kind of go through a time period where we know it's very close before we close it. That's not a threat. That's just that we wait until the bridge meets the criteria to be closed, to close it. I don't do that lightly. I do it for the safety of the traveling public.
I'd move approval.
This, this makes me very sorry. This makes me very sad that we have to close it, but this is the best thing for the safety of the public. So.
Thank you. You're doing the right thing.
I would second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have, have, we've had this discussion on bridges many times. And did we just a week ago or two weeks ago, you said all of them are either open or under construction?
We're getting closer. So the reality is, is that since 2015, we have struggled to have no less than 10 bridges that were closed. And I was so happy when we got down to single digits. It's been kind of an ant and a rubber tree plant, just kind of one bite at a time, pushing it forward. And so it is sad to have to close this. The reality is, is I don't believe that we'll have to reconstruct this bridge. I believe that we're going to be able to, to fix it, which is also good. The goal of the department is to replace these bridges before we have to close them and to continue aggressive maintenance to them so that we don't have to close them as soon or replace them as soon.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five D, a resolution in the matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign the Environmental Professional Services Agreement Supplement III, which amends county contract C-21-0013 with Felsberg Holton Olvig.
This item and the item after it are supplemental agreement number three in reference to Saltilla Road from 27th Street to 68th Street. If, if 98th Street is, is in the realm of a 10-year project, Saltilla Road is, is at eight years without turning any dirt yet. We are getting closer. This is one more supplemental agreement to try to get us across the finish line.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five E, the Professional Services Agreement Supplement III, which amends county contract C-21-0013 with Felsberg Holton Olvig. By adding environmental services as outlined in Exhibit A and B, the total cost to the supplemental agreement is not to exceed $12,852.62.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five F, an agreement with United Farm and Ranch Management to perform professional appraisal services. The cost of the county for appraisers shall not exceed $6,100. And the cost of the county for court preparation testimony shall not exceed $1,050.
Pam Damian, Lancaster County Engineer. This contract is, is a contract for 148th and Holdridge. This is another one of our highway safety improvement program projects. We're excited to get it going. As you're aware, we have to have independent appraisals for these projects. And so this is the contract to have that independent appraisal.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five G, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a sole source contract to Subsurface Incorporated for CIPP culvert liners countywide in the amount of $405,220.
Pam Damian, Lancaster County Engineer. This is culvert liners. It's a fiberglass liner project, product that is baked on with ultraviolet light. It's not a solution every time for pipes that are failing, but it's a solution in particular for our paved projects where we don't have to open cut and shut down a paved road, a road with a lot of traffic on it. And so I bring this forward just so that we can have another toolbox to continue to work on our culvert crisis in Lancaster County.
That's very critical. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to five H, a special designated license application from Myers Cork and Bottle for an event on July 20th, 2024 at Spring Creek Prairie.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five I, an agreement with the Nebraska Commission for the blind and visually impaired for the Lancaster County Records Management Department to serve as a training site.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five J, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the County Youth Services Center Director to award and execute a purchase order to Securitas Technology for Commander Replacement Workstations in the amount of $12,936.76.
I move approval.
Second.
Director Alexander was actually here earlier. He had to be called away on a, something at the facility. He needed his attention. This is the, these are the workstations for the control room that we've already discussed. He just stopped by to see if we needed to add any questions. Mr. Vest and I told him, let him off the hook, so.
That's good.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five K, we have a series of recommendations to the Personal Policy Board. I'll go ahead and read them all into the record at the beginning. One, a request to change the title and revise the following classifications. Geographic Information Systems Manager to Geospatial Administrator, Property Appraisal Technician to Parcel Maintenance Technician, Computer and GIS Records Assistant One to Geospatial Technician Two, Computer and GIS Records Assistant Two to Geospatial Analyst, Computer and GIS Record Supervisor to Geospatial Developer, GIS Mapping Technician to Geospatial Technician One, and a request to amend the following rules. Rule 2.1 for purpose, rule 17.16 for emergency on-call pay, and rule 19.11 for funeral leave.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to five L, a tort claim filed by Tyler Cantrell against Lancaster County for property damage.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have everyone we need for executive session?
Commissioners, next item I have is the executive session.
I move we go into executive session for pending litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest at 9:25 a.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Executive session at 9:29. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to item seven, our public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not in the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak?
Robert Boer. Back to the cast vote record. Wayne Bennett stood right here last July and intentionally misled you about the nature of the cast vote record. He said the cast vote record was a capability of the system, just not one he utilizes. Let facts be submitted to a candid world. NIST, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, the federal agency responsible for standardizing cast vote records, wrote the following in the executive summary of a document titled, "Cast Vote Records: Common Data Format specification." I quote, "This document presents a common data format specification for cast vote records, hereafter referred to as CVRs, which are produced by vote capture devices such as ballot scanners, which we have." A CVR is an electronic record of a voter's selections with usually one CVR created per sheet or page of a ballot. Election results are produced by tabulating the collection of CVRs." End quote. On page three of the same document, NIST wrote, and I quote, "Simply put, a CVR is an electronic record of a voter's ballot selections and its primary purpose is to provide a record of voter selections that can be counted in an efficient manner to produce election results." End quote. And last but not least, from the Election Assistance Commission, the agency created by Help America Vote Act that certifies your tabulators, but offers no guarantee they can, they can't be abused. The EAC writes that ESNS scanner tabulators simultaneously scan the front and back of a paper ballot for conversion of voter selection marks to electronic CVRs. In summary, the voter selection marks on each ballot get converted to what is called an electronic CVR. The collection of all CVRs from all ballots constitutes a digital electronic database called the cast vote record, from and by which all votes are tabulated and election results are produced. Allegedly. Presuming no cheating occurs, which is a pipe dream when hackers have all the darkness they could ask for to do their dirty work in. You can readily see that Bennett was lying about the cast vote record. The cast vote record is not just a capability of the system. Creating cast vote records is fundamental and integral to the system, the electronic system. Without a collective electronic cast vote record, there would be no electronic tabulation and no electronic election results. As to the question of whether the electronic cast vote record is a public record, it's a no-brainer. It's paid for by the public and it's intended for public consumption, according to NIST. For what purpose? The purpose of watchfulness, citizen watchfulness. And here is, herein is the rub with Bennett. He doesn't want anyone checking his work, checking his work or the work of his secret communist vote tabulators. Bennett's excuse for not allowing counties to provide CVR reports was that county election officials aren't trained on how to export them. Whose fault is that? Listen, it takes all of five minutes to go through the steps to create a cast vote record report from the publicly owned data in the publicly owned tabulator. Bennett is intentionally keeping county officials and the public ignorant. Not the county officials couldn't take the initiative and teach themselves, but Bennett insists they not release cast vote record data to the public. The natural question is, if you have a first grade education at least, why? Why, why is Bennett hiding this information? For whatever reason, it can't be good. Bennett thinks you're all idiots. He prefers being a dictator over being a public servant. How dumb are we? Voting is only the most important civic thing we can do.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. I'm sure you've heard enough or you think you've heard enough of, about election integrity, but I just wanted to pass along a few comments from a, an interview of, by David Clements, and he was interviewing Jeff Lindberg, a systems expert. And this is what Mr. Lindberg has to say about elections. The big lie is that we have secure elections. There are three levels of election fraud. Level one is people voting multiple times, which is individual election cheating. Level two, people involved in systematic election fraud. In other words, people running ballots through a high-speed scanner multiple times. 2,000 mules would fall into this category, and that has to do with drop boxes. Level three, he says the largest problem is the use of machines. Mr. Lindberg cites Professor Halderman's comments that the machines are very vulnerable. But people don't want to talk about this area. During the interview, Mr. Lindberg demonstrated how the votes can be flipped. He ran seven votes through a tabulator and flipped the votes from Trump to Biden. Thank you very much.
Is it your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Wayne Smith from Lincoln.
Great. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Amber Parker. The American people have a right to this answer as it's all public servants that are accountable and it's we, the people, that are to be the bosses on what happened on January 6th in Washington, DC. Is this on?
It should be. Yeah, it just takes a second.
Okay. Do I push this on now? It looks like it's on.
Yeah, you shouldn't need to touch anything on the machine, I don't think.
And the American people want to know who was at fault. One thing is clear. President Donald John Trump wanted protection for the Capitol. This video speaks for itself. Who's at fault? Where the blame is? And why didn't major media news outlets talk about it or show this footage? That's former House Speaker Nancy Pelosi taking responsibility that the National Guard was not at the United States Capitol on January 6th.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the video, short video that was played last week about voter rolls, and I think it was an example of what was happening down in Florida. It's the type of thing that happens behind the scenes that, you know, when you have your eyes closed, you're not able to see what's going on. And there's so many things that are going on with all these electronic things for voter integrity that's going on behind the scenes. You know, how do all these pieces fit together? I think part of it is, you know, we're afraid to open up the box, the can of worms that it seems like it might be. It's going to create more work. But no, you're, you guys are the ones that need to open your eyes. We need to have that in, that validation that everything was fair. If we do that, what's going to happen? We'll find out. Is everything okay or not okay? So what's the fear that's behind this? What's causing this not to happen, to step forward? As I mentioned, the voter cast record, that is part of, part of the process too. There's different pieces to the puzzle. You've got the voter rolls, which can be manipulated because they're all electronic. So anybody can hack into those and get, get information or insert or delete voters from there. So that starts the process. Like I mentioned in that video, they, they created additional voters in different addresses. So they're able to send out mail-in ballots to those. But they actually didn't mail out those, but those ballots did come back in. Because it sounds like that they were actually counted in, in that other location too. So it's a place where there's so much manipulation that could happen behind the scenes that I think we really need to take a look, ask for the voter cast records, get that information. I think, and I think you guys are in probably a tough spot because you got Secretary of State's office saying everything's okay. County level, we're saying everything's okay. Where's the truth? Where's the truth?
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Any other members of the public? Okay. Saying none. Please proceed.
Announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June 13th, 2024. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. with the Board of Equalization immediately falling in room 112 of the county city building. County commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. LNK TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item nine is adjourned.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.